For South LA area councilman Herb Wesson, who created the camp nine years ago. It provides kids whose families can't afford traditional summer camp, three days of fun in the sun, all at no cost. Meals, t-shirts, and swim trunks included.
So this does a lot for my heart. I think it does a lot for the kids. And today, I snuck my grandchildren out. So I have my six-year-old grandson, four-year-old granddaughter, and three-year-old granddaughter. And it was a challenge finding clothes that fit them, but we succeeded.
Donors, volunteers, and groups like Community Build and Project Save help make this camp possible.
I love this.
Reporting from Camp Wesson, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Nighttime activities included campfires, stargazing with high-powered telescopes, and a Polynesian-style luau. Broadway's Globe Theatre is once again lighting up the downtown theater district and helping to breathe new life back into the historic corridor. Yana K. reports.
For the first time since the 1980s, the Globe Theatre marquee on Broadway shines once again. Its iconic neon lights and spinning globe were fully restored and brought back to life, thanks to the theater's new owner.
I'm falling in love with downtown. I'm falling in love with the Globe Theatre, because for me downtown is the soul of Los Angeles. You have a specific energy. It's unique.
City officials and community members gathered for the official relighting ceremony, marking a major milestone for not only the Globe, but for the entire Broadway corridor.
You know, one of the best things to bring us a district to life is lights. And so we're now seeing Broadway come back to life with all of these lights.
And the lights are just the beginning. Other parts of the Globe Theatre are also undergoing renovations as part of Councilmember Jose Huizar's Bringing Back Broadway Initiative, a 10-year effort to revitalize the historic downtown district.
One at a time, we are seeing these amazing historic gems brought back to life, and we look forward to continuing that momentum.
Built in 1913, the Globe was unique in that it was the only theater that accommodated full-scale productions. But now, the new owner says the theater will serve as a venue for live performances, corporate events, and more. A sure sign that more change is yet to come. I'm Yana K. for LA This Week.
The Globe Theatre is set to be fully operational later this year. And the historic downtown corridor isn't done yet. Plans are underway to open another hotel in the district. Also, police warn against a popular prepaid credit card scam, and a community garden gets spruced up. These stories and more in City Beat. The Seidel Group's free-hand brand of hospitality properties, geared towards a younger traveler, will soon come to historic downtown with the purchase of the 13-story 1940s Commercial Exchange Building at 416 West Eighth Street. The property's location at Eighth and Olive is one block from the proposed downtown LA streetcar line. It will also serve as a connection point between the convention center and the rapidly revitalizing Broadway corridor, the focus of Councilman Jose Huizar's Bringing Back Broadway Initiative. The development of the property into a hotel is expected to create hundreds of new jobs. The LAPD is helping to get the word out about a popular scam involving prepaid debit cards, such as one seen here. Police say scammers usually call unsuspecting victims pretending to be from the Department of Water and Power or the IRS, and demanding that the victim purchase a prepaid debit card for an outstanding balance, or risk having their utility shut off or legal action taken against them. The victim is then asked to call back with the PIN to the card, allowing the scammers access to that money. Police say be suspicious of callers who demand immediate payment for any reason. The Hubert Humphrey Recreation Center in Pacoima gets a new playground designed by Shane's Inspiration. Shane's Inspiration designs and builds wheelchair-accessible playgrounds for kids of all abilities. The site consists of two play areas, one for kids up to five years old, and another for the five-to-12 age group, which features a sea life theme. Various elements of the playground are designed with handrails or other safety features for children who need assistance balancing or traversing the playground. The Howard Finn Park Community Garden in Tahanga received a spruce up recently. Councilmember Felipe Fuentes, along with community groups, cleared out weeds, picked up trash, and planted some trees as a way for families to learn more about growing healthy food in their neighborhood. The garden consists of a fruit tree orchard planted with peach, plum, lemon, apple, and apricot trees, as well as a separate area for vegetables and native and non-native plants. Since taking office a year ago, Councilmember Fuentes has promoted and encouraged healthy living, a clean environment, and access to fresh food. The Van Nuys Police Station is celebrating 50 candles on its birthday cake. Anna Marcos takes us to the station's open house event and shares a bit of its history.
A little community outreach goes a long way, especially when you're celebrating your 50th birthday. The Van Nuys Police Station threw its doors open to the public for its big 5-0, and it may have even reeled in some new potential recruits in the process.
I've changed my mind on how I see the police. I think it's very tough. And, you know, I thought it wasn't for me, but now they talk to me and they show me what they do. And, you know, it's not all about the hard work, but it's also fun, and it changed my mind.
A lot has changed for the Van Nuys Station in 50 years. It was once the headquarters for the LAPD in the Valley, but with the opening of other stations, such as the Valley Bureau and the Valley Traffic Station, this facility has become more of a community-oriented center.
We have our community programs, our youth programs, that we launch out of here for the Van Nuys area. And then we still house our commercial crimes, which is identity theft. And our scientific investigation division, and our abused child unit are all still parts of the Van Nuys family here.
And now, the Van Nuys Station has opened a mini-library for the public.
It's here to assist. The big library, that's closed on certain days of the week, but this is open 24/7. So if a parent has business to do with the police department, they have their little ones. They have a place to put them where they're safe.
And of course, looking at all the LAPD toys and gadgets is a fun community experience in itself. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Some of the displays included the bomb squad, SWAT, air support, Valley Traffic, and more. And in another part of the Valley, heavy machinery gave way to manpower as volunteers joined their council member to help clean up some Valley neighborhoods. Yana K. takes us to Operation Bobcat.
Ten-year-old Diego Orozco is working hard shoveling dirt into this trash bag. He's spending the day helping clean a part of the Los Angeles River in Reseda. And at such a young age, Diego already knows the importance of maintaining a clean neighborhood.
We think that nature is important for our city and for our lives, because trees give us oxygen and take in our carbon dioxide so we can breathe.
The cleanup is part of Councilmember Bob Blumenfield's Six Community Action Teams, or Bobcats for short, that he announced last July to address various issues in the communities he serves. This beautification project is one of those efforts designed to clean Valley neighborhoods.
We're working to make this whole place beautiful, to make it a fitting and appropriate and contemplative walk along the water and make it into what was the community I saw, make it into a community asset.
Volunteers got help in the form of a sanitation pickup truck dedicated to helping remove all sorts of trash and debris.
We use that truck for physically getting the job done. When we can't move the wheels of bureaucracy to get something to happen fast enough, we jump in the truck and we just do it.
The truck can also be used to pick up bulky items from neighborhood streets. Blumenfield says he hopes these cleanup efforts will add just that much extra shine to proud Valley neighborhoods. I'm Yana K. for LA This Week.
To report blight or to request a cleanup, residents can call 818-774-4330. There's always room for one more farmer's market here in Los Angeles. One of the newest markets opened just a few months ago in Glassell Park, a welcome addition to those who live and work in the area. This new farmer's market is located at 3150 North San Fernando Road, right outside the new Goodwill, Workforce, and Enrichment Center in Glassell Park.
The ease of parking and having live music is really great, and having tables. And, you know, if you have any money left, you can go to Goodwill and buy something.
Councilmember Mitch O'Farrell's office partnered with CLA, which stands for Sustainable Economic Enterprises of Los Angeles, to open up this market at what they hope will become a community gathering place.
We think it's really part of building healthy communities and really enriching the community with these great food products and local produce items. And it's delicious.
Live music and an open-air market, a combination organizers and vendors hope will be hard to resist.
We're happy to be here at Glassell Park. And we want fresh fruit and vegetables for the community. That's why we're here.
It's been good. This is only our second time at this market, but we love the neighborhood.
And it's not often you go to a supermarket and learn where the food you just purchased came from or how your dollars will be spent.
So we have an animal rescue in Mojave, about 90 miles north. And all of our proceeds go to supporting our animal rescue, feeding the animals. We have 800 animals, 700 goats, 350 make milk that provides for our goat cheese. And it's all free-range. We don't have a kill policy, so a lot of goat farms will let their goats be sold off for meat when they're older, but we let ours live out their lives altogether.
While the Glassell Park Farmer's Market is the new kid on the block, the supporters say it's got great potential to becoming a neighborhood staple. The Glassell Park Farmer's Market is open Thursdays from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. It's the eighth farmer's market operated by CLA here in the city of Los Angeles. And we devote this week's list of things to do to National Night Out, which is observed nationwide. Here are just a few events around our city that are putting the spotlight on community building and crime busting in our neighborhoods. Whether it's a full-blown block party or a visit from the local police representative, for many communities throughout this nation, August 5th is National Night Out, a time when the spirit of community is celebrated and the right of people to enjoy safety from crime is honored. And one National Night Out celebration will be taking place at the Point Setia Rec Center on its sports field at 7341 Willoughby Avenue. This massively attended blockbuster event will take place from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m., hosted by the LAPD and the Melrose Action Neighborhood Watch. There will be pet adoptions, free tree giveaways, activities for kids, and you'll get to sample great food from area restaurants. Go to melroseaction.org. Meanwhile, the LAPD West Valley Division will be presenting its Movie in the Park event as part of National Night Out. The movie, The Sandlot, will be playing at around 6:00 p.m. at LAPD SWAT Officer Randall D. Simmons Park at the corner of Van Owen Street and Wilbur Avenue in Reseda, right next door to West Valley Station. You're encouraged to bring a picnic. We posted the event flyer on our LA This Week Facebook page. And over at Northridge Park, you can join Councilmember Mitchell Englander for Movie Under the Stars for National Night Out, America's Night Out Against Crime. The councilman's outdoor movie screenings are a way for families to have a safe and fun family outing at the city's various public parks. This event begins at 7:00 p.m. with the showing of The Lego Movie, beginning at nightfall approximately 8:00 p.m. Bring picnics, blankets, and chairs. Admission is free, and popcorn and children's activities will also be available at no charge. Northridge Park is located at 18300 Lamar Street in Northridge. Enjoy National Night Out, and that's a look at some upcoming things to do. They've been closed for a while as they underwent a facelift, but now the Barrington Park tennis courts have reopened for business, a project made possible by community support. Anna Marcos takes us there.
Playing tennis is a family affair for Lois, Colleen, and Ethan Orpheus. They are among the first residents to enjoy the newly rehabbed tennis courts at Bretwood's Barrington Park.
This is three generations playing together right now. It's my grandson, my daughter-in-law, and me and the grandma.
Councilmember Mike Bonin helped find city money for the project, but he also got help from the L.A. Parks Foundation.
Recently, we were able to improve the children's playground and the basketball courts. There's a lot more that can be done here, and there's a lot more that will be done here.
The court was faded, a lot of cracks, and the fencing was rusted. It's important to have given them an opportunity to enjoy a court that they could play safely in and that they could enjoy.
But the $80,000 project might not have happened without community support. The Archer School for Girls donated $20,000.
If there's anything on the court, especially if there's like a crack or if anything might be throwing you off that could affect your whole entire game and how you play.
With new flooring and fencing, serving a ball on the court never looked so smooth. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Besides the tennis and basketball courts and the playground, the park also has an indoor gym, community room, volleyball courts, and football and soccer fields. And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
I am a proud digital citizen.
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 We are all proud digital citizens.
I pledge to take care of my computer tablet.
We pledge to be honest and responsible online and off.
I pledge this
to myself
and my community.
Take a pledge to support our efforts to ensure all youth have a computing device and are safe and responsible online. No matter where they are, it's their future. Let's secure it.
My name is Eric.
My name is May.
We are in Chinatown. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Sargent, please call the members. I do want to thank Mr. Blumenfield, Buscaino, Corretts, Martinez, Rabin, and members of today's on-time caucus. Sargent, call the members. I need to know their ETA so we can get started today.
Good morning. It is Friday, August 1st. I want to welcome you to your Los Angeles City Council meeting. We're very pleased to be here in the Valley today. Madam Clerk, I believe we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Blumenfeld, Bonner, Buscaino, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Huizar, Corretts, Krikorian, Labash, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Wesson. Ten members present a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
O'Farrell moves. Martinez seconds, next.
Communitar resolutions for approval.
Krikorian moves. Corretts seconds, next.
Mr. President, there's a request to continue Item 1 to August 15th.
Okay, so without objection, that'll be the order?
Items 2 through 4 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Specials, members? I do not see any, so let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay.
Item 5 is an item for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, that item is now before us. Do we have cards?
No cards.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on that. Members, Mr. Krikorian?
The board indicates Items 5 and 6. I just wanted to call Item 6 special, Mr. President. I'm not sure if we're on that.
I thought we were on just 5.
We just called 5, but it says 5 and 6.
Okay, so listen.
When we get to 6, I'd like to call.
I got you. Okay, so on Item 5, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, that brings us where? To Item 6, which we will hold at the request of Mr. Krikorian? Okay. Okay, so what I'll do at this point, we'll start... I'll take some of the general public comment cards. Monica Alexenko, Kathleen, and I can't quite make out the last name. Chuck Tenon, if you come forward. Identify yourself and welcome.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Monica Alexenko. Several of us have voiced our concerns in the past regarding the loss of industry in Los Angeles, particularly in the entertainment sector. We were very gratified to read Mr. Krikorian's newsletter urging Sacramento to expand the tax incentives. And we truly appreciate when council members are Valley representatives as a whole and not just focused on one particular area. We would ask that the L.A. Council creates and/or adopts ordinances to incentivize the entertainment industry to work especially in Los Angeles and L.A. County. Once again, permits need to be lowered. When it's cheaper to fly a crew, put them up in a South Carolina hotel, pay for all expenses rather than shoot in Los Angeles. There is something definitely wrong. Also, again, I would urge that the sales tax be lowered in order to give a reason for businesses to come to Los Angeles. Secondly, the problem with marijuana clinics that we are having in our area. We need to see much swifter action on closures of these establishments. Every day in Van Nuys, new illegal shops are opening, and we need our officials to be focused on enhancing the quality of life for citizens. Lastly, regarding quality of life, we would ask that you change the ordinance that allows people to park their vehicles on residential streets that lets them do this for days, even a couple of weeks at a time, simply by moving the car one inch. This is just destroying the quality of life for those of us on our streets. So thank you so much.
Next? And is it Ms. Patten? I'll let you say it.
Kathleen Patten. You don't have to salute me yet.
You don't have to salute me yet. I have a problem. I'm in a residential zone, R1, and people have set up and have set up a situation where they can have a childcare facility, and I'm really not happy about it. We haven't been notified, and they do have a permit from the building and safety, but we were never notified. Now, we have a situation where there's a Catholic school and church, and Van Nuys High School, both day and night school, and we have a lot of traffic going on, and we have street cleaning two times a week on a dead end or a cul-de-sac street. Now, how is it that they can go ahead and have a permit like this and be renters and still have access to having a business in an R1 zone? And there's going to be a lot of children. It's a daycare situation. So, I just really, what can be done about the childcare? And then also, when we're having a situation with vendors, vendors that are serving food don't have permits. If you get sick, who do you refer to? And then for the vendors that have their businesses on Van Nuys Boulevard or the side streets, and they bring their clothing and their mannequins and all of their various other things out, and we stumble over them. So, I mean, it's just very inconvenient of their thoughtlessness in the city offices that they present these kind of permits and let them do these kind of things. I've lived...
Thank you. Mr. Tenon, followed by Mr. Nightingale, followed by Candido Marrez.
Good morning, Council President Weston and council members. Cable Channel 35 is no longer our city channel, and over 70% of the people in Los Angeles can't access it unless you pay Time Warner to watch it at $59 a month. You can watch the L.A. County and the L.A.S.D. for free, and in other cities across the United States, they offer free public access to their city government without having to pay for it. The issue is no public access to view Channel 35 in our city government. Tom Labanze was going to introduce a motion to give public access back. Paul Corret told me that he would second it. Where is the motion to restore our city Channel 35? Tom Labanze told me that Time Warner pays the city $5 million per month for capital improvements, yet we must pay to watch it. Time Warner charges you to watch the Dodgers. Soon it will be Time Warner will be charging you to watch Time Warner Lakers, Kings, Clippers, and the news channels. I gave Tom Labanze a solution. Comcast Time Warner should provide an over-the-air signal public access as a condition of its $45 billion takeover of Time Warner. This digital divide is separating people in our city from government, disabled, low-income people who can't afford to pay in the age. Fix the problem so everybody can watch it. The people of this city and our city government should not be held hostage by Time Warner's monopoly and continuous greed. Mr. Mayor, are you listening? Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Mr. Nightingale, followed by Candido, followed by Mr. Sax.
Yes, good morning. I don't know, man, this, in my style, a lot of you people might call me a racist and a bigot, but this thing about the borders and our president and you people up here, that you turn around and just let this thing run wild. There's not enough room for everybody. Look at what this valley looks like. I don't go downtown. I don't know what it looks like. I just drive around the valley, and it looks like a sewer. It's the Third World that they're down there turning around and down south that turn around and might live like this, but I never did. And you people just aren't doing a damn thing about it. It's just like it's an open city, a sanctuary city, and everything else. And so what are we supposed to do about it? Move away? You think that's fair? I don't understand it. You are elected officials to take care of business. We have laws. Why do I, I like, I race cars. Why do I have to obey the speed limit? I don't want to. What makes you any better than me? That you can let it all run wild like this, and I have to obey all these other laws? Why should I? Why should I pay my taxes? You squander the money. Look at DWP. You had a great big pipe break. They turn around and give you how many multimillion dollars a year, and they won't fix the pipes? Because you people think it's a Ching Ching Bank? That's called fraud. It's called embezzlement. And you expect all of us to keep on paying into this situation that you don't do a darn thing about the people that live here, except unless you're on welfare or some type of government program that we can turn around and we can survive?
Okay, thank you, Candido. You want to come forward, followed by Mr. Sax?
Good morning, Mr. President. Council member. I just want everyone to know, Mr. Nightingale is not a racist. He's just a human being who's concerned. So, we appreciate your comments, Mr. Nightingale. Mr. President, council members, thank you for coming to the San Fernando Valley. Candido Marrez, proud resident of the 12th District. With me, John Camara, Mr. Jim Piper, and our good little friend, Mr. Abraham, who is part of our group here. Unfortunately, last month, we lost a great hero in our community, Father Rodolfo. He passed away, excuse me, July 5th. It was unexpected, and we're here because we want to honor him. We want you to know who he was. He was a gentleman that was born in 1937. He became a priest in 1964. He traveled all over the world, spoke five languages. He made sure that if you spoke German, Filipino, whatever it was, Father Rodolfo would speak to you in your language because he cared about you. Another thing that people didn't know about him was that he would often loan people to whoever, and it didn't matter where you came from, what religion you were, Father Rodolfo loaned you money. So, he will be greatly missed in our community, and we just wanted you folks to know that Father Rodolfo is gone but not forgotten. He was a big, big fan of another hero in our community. Three years, ladies and gentlemen, we've come before you to honor a woman in our community, Ms. Monica Benavides. And as you can see, she's an American hero. Turn those shirts around. She's an American hero. She's a community hero. And I know Ms. Martinez is doing everything she can, but folks, you know what it takes to become, to do this. All we're asking for is a little plaque, a little plaque at Delano Park that honors her. Today, we went over to give her her T-shirt, and she couldn't get out of bed. She's been hospitalized twice, twice, and what is going to happen? One of the things, Mr. Weezer is a great man from your community, a war hero that you and I both honor every Fourth of July. We can't let this go on, Mr. President. We need to run. I know Ms. Martinez is doing everything she can.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Sax and Carlos? I thought I saw you. You're next. Okay, Mr. Sax?
Yes, thank you. Good morning and welcome back, or maybe not welcome back. Anyway, it's been a while, but the mayor's announcement about taking, asking the city nonprofits in the city to take on this problem with the young immigrants had me thinking, had my light bulb go off. I was wondering if he named two nonprofits for the DWP to help out. There's two nonprofits that don't do anything. It'd be a perfect example of government involvement. And speaking of the nonprofit, but then I'm thinking, in this article from July 14th from the Downtown News, it mentions the Training and Safety Institute, not nonprofits. Then they're called trusts, not nonprofits. Then Ron Galperin is going, oh, wait, Ron Galperin is going against, going after the trust, not nonprofits. But what's interesting is in today's Daily Briefs, DA says public funds misused, somebody in a water district. He asked for donations to a nonprofit, which is what I've said. If the DWP is running nonprofits, you should be able to count a donation as a tax deferral. Everybody pays their bill. That money goes to a nonprofit instead of something like infrastructure, which would help. And by the way, Brian said that they did plenty with that $2 million. So then why doesn't the city deduct from the $117 million they're getting in addition to that $2 million? Don't know why. $44 million for two nonprofits, $117 million a year for operations, safety operations? Something doesn't make sense. It's not necessarily the DWP, and somebody mentioned, by the way, it's funding for the infrastructure. No, it isn't. It's government. It's the people you elected don't do anything. Your whole careers is that infrastructure...
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sax. Carlos Bakarano? Good to see you.
Good to see you too. Good morning, Council President, members of the city council. My name is Carlos Bakarano. I'm the executive director of the Salvadorian American Leadership and Educational Fund. Today, I'm here to encourage you all to support a resolution that will be introduced today by our friends, Councilmember Gil Cedillo, City One, Councilmember Corrin Price, Councilmember Nuri Martinez, and Councilmember Farrell, to support the unaccompanied children, or as we call them, the refugee children from Central America. We encourage you all to support these children that are fleeing violence from El Salvador, Guatemala, and Honduras. Today, we had the Vice Minister of Foreign Affairs for El Salvador visiting us to see what's going on with these children in the United States, to make sure that they are being treated with humane treatment. So, I'm looking forward to getting your support next Tuesday, and I thank you all for your continued support for the Salvadorian and Central American community and the immigrant community in Los Angeles. It is the right thing to do, and we ask President Obama and Congress to support these children. Thank you very much.
Now, thank you. Good to see you. With that said, let's go on to, Mr. Parks, are you ready? Then let's turn the floor over to Councilmember Parks for presentation.
Mr. President? I'm joining Mr. Parks. I want to call up Ms. Liruvina Del Carmen Magarin, Vice Ministry of Salvadorian External Affairs and Ministry of Foreign Affairs, Francisco Castaneda. We also ask Janet Conejo, Huberto Oriana, and Franklin Mata Minardo to join us up here. Hola.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much, Mr. Sadio. We're joined here together because we share the El Salvadorian corridor on Vermont, and we have a resolution for a number of dignitaries that live here in Los Angeles and also visiting Los Angeles. Every 6th of August, the Salvadorian-American families have established a day to acknowledge and celebrate the contribution and the values of their culture. The 6th of August in 1525, the official founding of El Salvador was declared Vila de las Hamacas, where their indigenous ancestors fought historic battles against the submission and slavery of Spanish colonialism in order to preserve the life and liberty of its people. Today and in the years to come, the strength of the Salvadorian-American cultural values can be preserved and passed on to future generations. Salvadorian-American families continue to promote their cultural values free of prejudice and as proud members of American society. They also continue to enhance the social, educational, professional, and political aspects throughout the city of Los Angeles and America, which they call home. This August 3rd, 2013, the United Communities of El Salvador will celebrate the 16th year of promoting the Day of Salvador in the city of Los Angeles and across the United States, and is committed to keep the legacy alive, which was set by Salvadorian National Association SANA, to celebrate and pass their heritage and cultural values to future generation. Today, by adoption of the resolution, the Los Angeles City Council, along with the mayor, do hereby declare August 6th as El Salvadorian Day in Los Angeles. I want to present this with Mr. Sadio.
Buenos dias. Do la gracias a todos los concejales que me hacen el honor de estar aquí.
He's going to interpret.
I want to thank you all council members for being here. Just one moment, one moment. Yes?
I want to thank you all council members for being here.
Sé que siempre han acompañado a la comunidad salvadoreña en todas sus actividades.
I know that always you have accompanied the community Salvadorian in all the activities.
Y por eso le doy la gracias, sinceramente.
And therefore, I want to thank you.
Especialmente quiero agradecer a Bernard Parks...
Especially, I want to thank Mr. Bernard Parks.
...y a Gil Cedillo.
And Gil Cedillo.
...que nos contribuyó con la plaza, monseñor Romero.
They have contributed to us with the Plaza of Mr. Romero.
...y la lucha permanente por los derechos humanos de nuestros compatriotas.
In the permanent fight for the human rights of our compatriots.
Gracias por este reconocimiento que es para los salvadoreños.
Thank you for this award.
...que es para los salvadoreños.
That is for the Salvadorian people.
Lo cual me compromete también a seguir trabajando mucho.
It compromises me as well to continue working.
...por contribuir a su bienestar.
To contribute to their well-being.
Gracias.
Thank you.
I'd like to also introduce Bernie Mato on my staff that works directly with the El Salvadorian community and also advise all of our colleagues that this delegation is going to sit through our council meeting, and they will be available after council if you'd like to meet with them and discuss any issues. So, they will stay through the meeting and will be in the audience. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Parks, and welcome.
We're going to go take some photos.
Oh, you know what? I'm sorry, Mr. Price. I am so sorry.
It's okay, Mr. President. Thank you. I just want to welcome our visitors here. I had the honor of traveling to El Salvador on occasion of the presidential inauguration, had a chance to meet with the Vice Minister and other dignitaries. And so I think it's especially significant that we welcome you here today when we're introducing a motion that's drawing attention to the critical condition of young, of children coming from El Salvador and from Central America. And so we just stand in solidarity with you. We look forward to our, not only our cities working together, but our countries working together to bring about the kinds of treatment that is humane, that is respectful, responsible for our kids and for our people. And so, welcome. We're happy to have you here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Price, and again, thank all of you. Ms. Martinez, are you ready for our next presentation?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'm just waiting for our honorees to join me. Come on. You guys can... Why are you doing this? Good morning. Good morning. Thank you very much. It's my pleasure to present this recognition to the Japanese gardens on their 30th anniversary. For... Thank you, Candido.
You're majestic.
The residents of the 6th District, for the residents of the 6th District, the gardens provide a wonderful resource for both, to both admire the beautiful landscape and the authentic Japanese teahouse that sits at the Japanese gardens. Our community sees the garden as a wonderful opportunity to escape busy city life. And I remember going to the Japanese gardens as a high school student. When I was at San Fernando High School, my very first field trip as a 10th grader was to the Japanese gardens. So, I have fond memories of the gardens and everything that it taught us as young people. It's a great opportunity... It's a great opportunity to see how we clean water can be used to support the Gardens and many other parks throughout the city of Los Angeles. And on June 14th, we had the opportunity to celebrate with the community the 30th anniversary of the Japanese Gardens, with a wonderful program where the mayor joined us to celebrate not only the history of the Japanese Gardens, but also in working with our office and the Department of Public Works and the Bureau of Sanitation, we hope that to begin construction of the new facility and the courtyard there at the area of the Japanese Garden, as well as a community center where more people can enjoy not only the facilities, but actually can host events at the Japanese Gardens. We hope to get that underway in the near future. And I want to introduce my really good friend, Jean Green, who's the manager and a landscape architect at the Japanese Gardens. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you. Good morning, all. I know a lot of you've been to the Japanese Garden, and I hope you all get a chance to come by. We tried to give you gift bags from our Mayor's Advisory Group. These are our Mayor Advisory Group behind me here. I hope you enjoy the gift bag. Inside the gift bags for each council district are 100 complimentary free passes to the Japanese Garden to pass out to your constituents. So if you get a chance, if you want some more for your constituents, please give us a call, and we'll send you some more to your council office. It's something that every person in the city should really enjoy out there. It's unique. It's really super. For each council district, we don't want to put this behind you here, we have our 30th anniversary poster. We have one for each council member. They're on the table on your way out. If you'd please take one with you. If you can put it in your office, great. If not, if you can share it with somebody else, we really appreciate that. It's our 30th anniversary. We have over 75 volunteers and docents with support of our council district, Nuri and Linda, who goes all the means we have there. It's just a great time. So again, thank you for having us out here today and taking time for us.
Kocorian, I have cards on six, so I'm just going to hear the cards on six, and then we'll dispense with it later. So if I could have Mr. Sax and Candido, please come forward on item number six on today's agenda.
Yes, thank you. Good morning again, Arnold Sax. And this is a Hollywood Transit Business Improvement District. Couple of points of interest here. These business improvement districts are run by, overseen by, those infamous nonprofits. They will name a nonprofit to oversee this Hollywood business district, which means there's not an agenda that's open to the public, because nonprofits don't have to have that. But more importantly, we're talking about funds for transit, transit district. So let's take a look at some of the other funds that have come your way via your government, like Measure R funds would be considered funds for transit programs. Billion dollars, except not a billion dollars. I'm talking about, you're going to get funds from these businesses to, for this transit improvements. Measure R was for transit improvements.
killed and, and another soldier was taken, was kidnapped and taken hostage. I certainly, I wish peace for the region, and as we adjourn in Max's memory, we join in mourning with his parents, siblings, and all those who loved and knew Max. May he rest in peace. I'm Yisrael Haay.
Mr. Englander on this very matter.
If I could add to that, and I want to thank you so much. I picked up my daughter yesterday from the airport from Israel, and she was there, she's 18, she was there at the time for birthright. And upon learning what happened to Max, while she didn't know him personally, she knew a lot of his friends and a lot of mutual friends, and saw everything on social media. She, at her urging and working with birthright as well, that morning after the ceremony, they had visited Yad Vashem, and then, and then they went to the mount to his memorial. She told us last night that it was probably one of the hardest experiences, when she was there, to go visit those soldiers and to visit Max, that she's ever experienced in her life. She was also incredibly depressed last night that she'd left Israel, that she had come home, she felt too soon, and felt an incredible, it was an incredible experience for her, and has never been so touched by what was going on and what continues to go on there each and every day. And, and that, this was so close to home, that Max is truly, was one of us as a Valley boy, having gone to El Camino, where I graduated high school, where many of her friends attend school, where she was in Israel at the same time that this occurred. It will forever have changed her life, as well, as well as all of ours. I really appreciate that, Bob, that you, that you reached out and brought Max's father here, and has, has been in touch with their family as well. This hits home for all of us, and it, it just is another reason we, we have to continuously, every day, keep Israel and all the people that are fighting in the IDF. My brother, after he went to Israel, he moved back to Israel and joined IDF as well. We've had a long experience in my family, and I really, my heart goes out to the family of all the soldiers and all the people who are, and have relatives there and friends there, who are going through everything they're going through on a day-to-day basis and have for decades. And we, we have to constantly pray and keep them in our hearts. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. Members, other adjourning motions, I'll go to Mr. Sadio.
Yes, I'd ask that we adjourn in the memory of Andy Beatty. Andy Beatty was the supervising advancement for all of President Barack Obama's visits here to Los Angeles. He also served as an advancement in, in security for President Bill Clinton and President Jimmy Carter. And Angelino, Mr. Beatty, was just over the celebration of the, the marriage of his oldest daughter Lauren, married last Saturday, when he passed away last Sunday morning out walking his dog. And so I ask that, he never recovered, I ask that we, we close in his memory. He was also an owner of a local business called The Strategic Partners, which manufactured school uniforms and uniforms for healthcare workers here and, here and throughout. And so I ask that we close in his memory prayers for his wife Kim and his three daughters, Lauren, and his two other daughters, Sarah and Catherine. Then I ask that we adjourn with Paul Coretts, I've been waiting for this. In the spring of 1973, I had the great privilege of being in, at UCLA. I was in this class, communications class, which is in a big, very big room, it's a huge room, and I had this incredible teacher who was, made it seem like you were in a small seminar. And that's not easy when you're speaking to really large audiences, but she was incredible. You, if you sat in the back, you could barely see them, the classes were really big at UCLA. And she was great. She was charismatic, charming, funny, and did a great job. As it turned out, she won the, the teaching award that year, and then apologized to us, the students, and said she was gonna go into the administration. She went on to become the Executive Vice Chancellor, and then later moved, after many years, to take over LACMA, and turn LACMA around and transition it to become the great institution that it is. Andrea Rich was a great Angelino, a great civic leader, a great humanitarian, and I always appreciated her as being a great teacher who motivated me in the field of communications and to continue my studies at UCLA. So, Paul, I know you have a lot more to add to that.
I could, but I think, I think you've said everything that I wanted to say. So I would just ask to be a second on that.
Okay. So we'll make sure the two of you have signatures on that. Other adjourning motions? I'm looking now to my right, looking to my left, I do not see any. Have a great weekend. This council meeting is adjourned.